Thursday night meeting, couple of items on the agenda. I'll say, I'll indicate first that the full board is present in person. So we have a quorum. And then I'll ask whether there is any public comment unrelated to the petition, general public comment. And we have no public comment and all of the audience wants to make some general statement. Then no, no minutes to be approved. So we'll call the public hearing as the next item on the agenda. And that is case number 24017, the Eightieth Street Investments LLC. This is a request to renew and extend a conditional use for group headquarters with a maximum occupancy of 12 residents, which is previously approved under Z21023, entitled 27 West 121 Eightieth Street Investments LLC. That approval on January 13, 2021. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on April 2, 2024. And we have a two and a half acre site serviced by well and septic in Naperville Township. No objections or comments have been received by any of the municipalities or authorities to whom we've circulated a petition. And I have a stack of exhibits, one through 22. Is there a survey in here?
I have those to submit. There is a survey in there, but I know you like a full size copy, which I have here.
Well, we can take a full size copy for our record, but we can use these.
Yes.
Which, which of these is the survey, one through 22?
We have a site, there's a site plan, not a survey.
But there's no survey? What about the topographic?
You got a topographic plan, this looks either three.
Yeah, well, I don't need a topographic plan, but do we use that as the survey?
Yeah, the topographic plan, I apologize, is both a survey and a topographic.
That's, that's what I anticipated. Then I'll ask all of those members or individuals that are part of the petitioner's team, please raise your hand and be sworn in, and then I'll ask you to identify yourselves. You guys are all with the petitioner?
We do soundly swear affirm the testimony about to give at this cause and out here in the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God.
Okay, counsel, you want to identify your, all of your witnesses?
Absolutely.
Spell the names too?
Absolutely. And I did provide the court reporter with all their business cards.
All right.
I am happy to spell them as well, but she's got.
You're going to have to spell them, just identify them.
Perfect, perfect. So with me are a number of people, first from Montanito, sitting next to me, Samantha Peterson, the Regional Director for the Central Region. She has appeared before you before. Dr. Molly Pearlman, who is Montanito's Chief Medical Officer. And behind me, who was kind enough to correct me on the survey, is Dustin Brown, who is the Vice President of Development and Facilities Maintenance. And as I mentioned, the court reporter, the car that gave you, has his old title on it. So just to make sure you've got that for the record. But I also have with me Erin Bowen, who's the Appraiser and Senior Manager of Valuation Advisory Services with Cohen Resnick. She has also testified before you before, as well as Brendan May, Traffic Engineer with KLOA, similarly, both testified on the Winfield project you have before. And one of the things we very specifically did on this project, as you know, we're back here three years later, and we specifically brought the same expert consultants with us to ensure that you have the opportunity to ask them whether or not their prior studies proved to be true and what the results of those are three years later.
Well, as a general matter, we gave you sort of a short fuse time period on your conditional use to determine whether any of the issues that we were concerned about created problems, whether there have been complaints, police reports, traffic issues, et cetera. So I mean, I anticipate a fairly lengthy presentation from you, but you could also say ain't no problems, please extend. So wherever you want to proceed.
Sure, I will leave that to you. You've got, as was mentioned, a fairly full set of documents here. The documents in this binder were all publicly submitted to the county and have been available to the public. I will, I will say to be completely accurate and open on it, the three words in this that were changed was that at the time we submitted it, the property value impact study said it was to be submitted and subsequently was submitted. But because this was already in the county's records, the table of contents still said that. But these are the identical documents that we provided to the county and that they put, made available to the public. So you've got this, it includes our, our studies, it includes all of that information. We have a full presentation, but we also respect that, as you've mentioned, this is kind of a unique project. We've actually had people say to us, we did a community meeting, met with a few members of the community who came, came out to the meeting. And they said, so why are you here since you were already approved? And I said, quite honestly, as chairman, very much what you said. The county wanted to see what's happened three years later and are we comfortable that you met those standards? You won't be surprised to hear from me that we met those standards. But I think what's even more important is, and I'll use Erin as the greatest example, she will talk about the fact in her presentation that, as happened in Winfield, where the next door neighbor, the only person who had actually objected to that project, who was a neighbor, sold her property for above market price and faster than average homes in the market. We also have a house kitty corner from us that has not only been sold at an above market price, not only sold in a timing that Erin discussed with you, but was similar to the market. More importantly, they're taking a 2,000 plus square foot home, Erin's got this information on me, and are now building a more than 4,000 square foot home. So clearly, this project did not dissuade them from selling that or a new buyer from, from building it. So I leave it up to you. I would like to allow Dr. Pearlman and Sam to give you just a little of the background of three years later, how many people we've served, how many of those are from your community? And how that, you know, so you have a real sense that this is, we're not, we're not serving, you know, this is directly servicing the people in this community and surrounding communities. And I'd also like Erin, because there is new information to come up and speak on what's happened since then on property values. I can have our traffic engineer, just to state it for the record, confirm his conclusions, which are that in fact, there are, our numbers met or were better than the numbers that we provided to you before and that caused you in the past to recommend approval of this project.
Okay, that sounds like a good way to proceed. How about just a general overview of the operation as a beginning? Is that?
Yeah, that will be me.
Okay, great.
So if I can weigh in, I, many of us, except for maybe you, have gone through this at least three or four times. And I love to hear the updates, but I'm more interested in hearing about, I think, you know, it's fine, I brought the packet, but I'd like to hear if there's any people from the community, the neighbors.
There's only one person, we'll get your public comment.
That's fine.
When I called for a public comment, that was public comment unrelated to the.
Yes, I know.
So we'll go for, we'll go through public comment.
So we don't need a full presentation, but I would like a short update.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to pass out, clearly you're not going to use this entire presentation, but just because it's got some of the pictures and the graphics, we'll jump, there are page numbers in this, we'll jump ahead with you to the pages, but I think it's useful when she's showing what the improvements are, et cetera. Do you have a copy of it?
Okay, then we'll have to take, that's going to be hearing exhibit?
This is, oh wait, I'm sorry. You jumped out of me, so here's a list of our exhibits. Court reporter also has them, exhibits through 22 are the ones you already have in front of you.
Right.
I have resumes of the people I just introduced here. Dr. Pearlman's resume was already in the binder, but I can provide those to you as well. And this was going to be exhibit 26 was our PowerPoint presentation. But again, I'm happy to limit that to the pages that we actually discuss.
All right, fine, we'll take those, we'll take all of those and mark in such a way as to reflect this exhibit sheet. Do you have that, Jessica? Do you have this exhibit sheet?
I can print this.
It shows one through 26. And then possibility of penciling in 27 through 31, I guess, I don't know.
Only if there are, you know, depending on questions, we certainly have other information if you have it, but I have a feeling you prefer not to have extraneous information from me, so. So that, the only thing I'm going to jump into just quickly before I have, have them start is just, you've got some pictures in the beginning there, pages two, three, and four, of what the property looks like, just to remind those of you who haven't seen it in a while. And you've already heard, already heard the history of the project. And I think it's been clear, but just to say for everyone's purposes, what we're asking you to review here, we're not asking you to determine whether or not the use of a adolescent clinic for eating disorders is appropriate here, as this whole group knows. That was permitted here as an eight bed unit. That was our original occupancy. When we came to this zoning board, it was only because we wanted to go from eight to 12. Because of the high demand there that I'm not going to go into, I'll let them talk about. But so permitted use at eight, at eight beds continues to this day under your code to be permitted use at eight beds, but the demand is really high. And the, what you allowed us to do, as you will hear, was literally according to some of the parents who were involved, life changing, and, you know, for, for their kids. Obviously also asking you to consider what would happen if this became a conditional use for 12 beds, because for the last three years, that's what we've been. And we, the one thing that isn't our application, that as with the Wheaton Project, we completely respected the desire to have us come back in three years, as we did on that project and on this one, we hope that at the end of this presentation, you will be convinced, as we are, that we've met all of your standards, we've met all of your requirements, shown that what we presented was not, not only accurate, but actually conservative, because in most areas, we've done better than what was shown. And we would ask that your recommendation of approval not include having us spend the money and time to come back in three years to do that over again. Obviously, your choice. Let me just throw real quick for the record, the chair's already talked about the exhibits that have been submitted, our application, within the application, there are written responses to each of your standards. Again, given time, I am happy if you have any questions on all the standards or any one of which you want us to address, I will do that. But out of respect for your time and for the communities, I will let you tell me if there are any of those that you have a concern about. The notice for this project, as already mentioned, was done by the county. We submitted, I apologize. I'm submitting the three resumes that I said showed to you. I have copies for each, and I would ask that you acknowledge to the record the expert testimony that's been provided by them. And with all that said and done, you've done a good job of keeping me from talking too much. So I'm going to move on to Samantha Peterson and Dr. Molly Pearlman to talk about not only what's happened in terms of service, but a general overview of that. And I think you're starting on?
Page 11, 11, 12 of the packet. But I can just give you a brief overview in the interest of time. And so we treat, just as a reminder, adolescent females from ages 11 to 17, 12 of them at a time. And we can go through our outcome data of the efficacy of our program, if you guys would like, but we don't need to go through those details. But just from specific numbers for you guys from the local area, we've had 73 clients from this community and the surrounding community here in Illinois. We've had 67 from the surrounding region. There is not a lot of adolescent female eating disorder treatment, unfortunately, in the Midwest. So we get to pride ourselves on that and be able to help not only our local community, but some of those surrounding states as well. But I think the bigger number here to focus on is the 1,000 other clients that we were able to connect with, that we did not personally treat, but we connected them with other resources in the community or realized that we were not the fit for them and we got them into other treatment. That was more suited for their needs, since we are just treating that primary eating disorder and secondary usually anxiety and depression that comes along with it. Another big concern that was raised previously was safety and the number of emergency vehicles that we have had in the past. In 2023, we had six emergency vehicles, and I'll make the same corny joke I made in Winfield, that two of those were fire trucks and it's a good thing I'm not the one cooking, because our smoke detector system is linked with the Naperville Fire Department. So if we cook something and it gets a little too smoky, the fire department has to come to our house. So in 2023, we only had six emergency vehicles, two of those were fire trucks. And in 2024, so far, we've had zero emergency vehicles. So with that, the, since 2020 and 2021, if we do call 911 or any of those emergency vehicles come, the whole brigade doesn't come like they typically do when you call 911 of fire, police, and ambulance. It's just whatever service we may need. At that, we build that relationship. They will use sirens coming down Modaf Street, but once they turn on AD, they don't have sirens and follow the traffic patterns of that for the safety of the community. So, and then the page 15 and 16 are just excerpts of letters that we've received from clients' parents and the impact that we have made on local families for their children to be able to come to our treatment center and also to local providers and the important relationship we've built with them of a local outpatient provider and Ascension, the hospital in the area that we work very closely with as a step down program for their clients.
And Susan, if I can, exhibit six, while we've given you, for purpose of the presentation binder, just some of the key excerpts from some of those letters. Exhibit six in your binders, also again, on the website, our full copies of all the support letters that were submitted. I should say, similarly, exhibit 20 is a transportation vehicle log. Because ambulances are used for both transportation purposes for fires, kitchen, et cetera, et cetera, we provided you with a transport log that shows the limited number of vehicles that actually are coming for an emergency purpose and confirms which ones have to have lights on, the fact that none of them have to have sirens on, and which ones do not have lights on.
And that is data over all four years that we've been open, so you can see it comparatively.
Last time, as I recall, we had testimony about the average length of stay, the average number of people, hours for visitors, any curfews, deliveries to the site, and waste disposal information related to the food service. So could you just touch on those items?
Yeah, absolutely. So please let me know if I missed any of the things that you just said. For visiting, families are allowed to come Fridays from 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. That's when we do visiting time for them. And we try to stagger it just because it's a house and we can't fit all of those families. Our average length of stay is 50 to 60 plus days, depending on the client. And we average around 12 clients at a time. We are relatively full for, through most of the year. And so that ebbs and flows just based on need and insurance, both of those numbers. And deliveries, we do have FedEx, UPS come probably nearly daily, more so because the kids like to buy Amazon. And they have, Amazon seems to be the biggest thing that comes to the house. And then we do have a contract with Groot where we have recycling and garbage that is picked up weekly.
And sharps?
We have a very small amount of sharps, but occasionally we do have Stericycle would be the company that comes to dispose of any sharps.
Oh, as long as you have a program.
Yes.
And what about curfews for your residents?
They're not allowed outside after dark. And so if it's dark outside, then they're inside with us. Their bedtime is 10 o'clock, it's lights out.
Okay. I'll come to the board for general comments later, but with respect to these operational questions, we've got sort of, I think the key witness now, right? So does anyone have any operational questions, Ms. Anderson?
So last time was a lot of the question about the landscaping in Shrewbury. I'd like to know, have you had any complaints from anybody regarding that?
But Dustin Brown is behind me, is the person who is here to discuss the exterior of the property and the landscape. I will have him come up next and have him just definitely discuss what's been planned there. Thank you, it's a good question.
Okay, well, good job, you're done. Who's next?
How about Dustin?
Do you want me to?
Oh, no, Molly, I'm sorry, please.
Oh, no, no, I, briefly, just to.
Oh, she's anxious, let her know.
Oh, no, I, I'm excited to tell you guys about the, the great work Sam's team is doing here. I'm our Chief Medical Officer.
I know, we've had that testimony, this will be the fourth time. So I think we understand.
All right.
I don't want to cut you off, because I think we should have some record as to the importance. But, you know, just kind of a capsule summary.
That's true. By far, one of the reasons, we actually have never, have not had the Chief Medical Officer here before, and we brought her just to make sure that if there were questions beyond what we've done in the past, that she'd be available for it, but.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to highlight briefly, I was at the neighborhood meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, and it was, it was helpful to hear what the questions from the community were. And I just want to reiterate some of the things that I found that they were, were interested in and a little bit surprised about. These are 11 to 17 year old children with eating disorders, primarily anorexia nervosa. And I'll tell you, the length of stay is often determined by how much weight they can gain. And so our program and what the data shows that we should have them gain about two to five pounds a week, that's what safely the body can do. And with the support of the team and the nutritionist and chef were able to get them to gain that weight, it's hard work, because it's a mental disease. They don't want to eat, we get them well, we give them the tools to learn how to eat on their own. So when they leave, they don't need to return to the hospital, we go back to treatment. But even if you want to march out, if they need to, to gain 20 pounds, that might mean they're there about eight weeks to, to get that weight on. So that can explain the, the length of stay and the work we're doing. Three meals, three snacks a day, a lot of support, nursing, coaching the patients along, and, and medically monitoring, because when someone's not eating, they're weak, they're faint. And so that's, those are the medical pieces that we commonly are addressing.
Okay.
Dr. Pearlman will obviously be available, unless there are questions, I'll, I'll have her sit down.
Yeah, thanks. You guys are very orderly, you speak and then you retreat to the second row.
Hey, we're moving on.
I can tell this operation must be run on a very regimented basis.
Hopefully that's not all for me.
Dustin, sure, I am Dustin Brown, VP of Development and Facilities Maintenance for Montanito. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about the property. I'll answer your question. To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about the current landscaping.
You're going to speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry. To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints about the current landscaping. You'll see in your packet, I don't know exactly which exhibit it is, there is a landscaping plan that does show that we have lost some trees through winter and storms. There is a plan in place in May, we'll be doing replanting of all those trees that were.
As the landscape plan is exhibit two.
Oh, thank you.
So let's make sure that that is a condition, it's just a, exhibit. Okay, go ahead.
Absolutely. And you could, would you explain why it is that we have waited for spring to?
Oh, because obviously it's not a good time to plant here in the winter. So we've been waiting for everything to thaw out and get ready. So that's why we have it set up with our landscaper in May.
Did you lose any trees planting during the tornado that went through on Bonanza State Weekend?
Yes.
Was it three years ago? Were those replaced?
I can't, I believe so. Some of it was just torn down, if there was too much damage. But we did replace whatever we could and then have looked at filling in anything in between, as Dustin said, we're going to continue doing.
We have a landscape plan, so we don't need to find out, you know, which week you lost a tree or whatever, because we have a landscape plan that you'll be committed to if this is approved.
Correct. Yeah. And actually, during that storm, our neighbor had a tree that was on the property line that fell down, the lady behind us, and it did some damage to her fence and her shed. And just as good neighbors, we were able to help her out and use some of our vendors to make those repairs for. But yeah, so we talked about in our, in our improvements to the property, we talked about the trees that we put in from the approval last time. And, and then we did our paving on the, on the sides of the house. All that will remain unchanged. We have no plans to make any changes to the outside of the house. Our handicap accessible parking space and ramp is still in place. Our septic system, we have a letter that's in there and in the exhibits from Advantage Consulting Engineers that just states that our IEPA permit is still in place. There's no change in use, there's no change in population. Everything that we submitted initially to the Dupaged Soil and Water Conservation Permit is still in place with no changes. And yeah, we haven't made any changes to the lighting. I hate to say that, but like there, from, from my perspective, there'll be no changes associated with this application. It'll be just as it was approved.
And one unique part of this project, because of the fact that we first operated as a permitted use, is that, can you confirm, and it's on page 17 of your binder, before we ever came in for the original conditional use permit, had you already installed 50 trees and shrubs and over 261 total landscape items?
That's correct.
That was done before we came in to see you. When we came into the zoning board, the zoning board asked for, based on neighbor comments, some additional screening, and how many additional trees did you put in for screening? 61, 61 additional trees. So there was a lot of landscape put in as part of this project initially. And we are pleased and we believe our neighbors are as well with what we've done at that site. And some of the neighbors who came in and spoke to us in the open house.
Let's just have a statement for the record that you have complied with all of the conditions concerning landscaping, fencing, lighting that were required as of the last hearing and the last authorization for your permit, right?
That is correct.
And, and what would be, if any, focusing on plans for the future, are there any differences between what has been identified as the site plan, part of exhibit one, and the survey topo, which is exhibit three? Do those two plans differ in any way?
So exhibit two is the landscaping plan, which identifies all the landscaping that was put in. And then, and then the Xs are the trees that were damaged that will be replaced.
My question relates more to a broader question than just landscaping. You've got, so if you were to build, your testimony is, we're not making any changes to the exterior. So that begs the question, are there differences between the survey and the site plan? Site plan would say, I'm building a new fence, I'm doing this, I'm putting a light post. But I trust there are no, because there are no changes contemplated for the future, that there is no difference between the site plan and the survey.
Right, if I could phrase it just a slight difference, with the exception of the trees you've identified that will be replaced, are there any differences between what was originally approved three years ago, what exists today, and what will exist after this hearing?
No.
Thank you.
And that goes, I'm not talking about just landscape, the exterior of the home, et cetera. And I don't think there've been, not that that's this group's purview necessarily, but have we even made significant changes internally?
No.
So it's really, it's the same facility.
And I think.
You ought to do something about your oven, because the prior testimony was that there had been some smoke, bro.
I think that's user error.
Okay, I'm sorry for the delay.
Dustin, anything else, stream, anything else?
Similarly, our other witnesses testified, Dustin will be available afterwards for any questions. And to keep us moving and move forward, I'm going to have, ask Brendan May to come up, but I'm going to, he's with KLOA, he's the person that testified. They testified to you before you on Winfield. His colleague testified here three years ago on this project. KLOA has been involved throughout. I'm going to identify just some specific questions, and obviously he can make a full presentation, but I think based on the answers, my, my sense is you won't need to hear that. And let me just ask, rather than having me say it for the record, for the record, did KLOA do a study of this project in 2000, for the 2021 conditional use permit? And then again, for this conditional use permit?
Correct, yes.
In that original permit, was your conclusion that there was no adverse impact on surrounding, adjacent roadways?
Yes.
And that there was adequate capacity for those?
That's correct, yep.
Have you, as part of your current study, did you also do a full, a full study of, of the area of traffic that's being generated?
Yes.
And the same question, is your, did your study find that there was any adverse impact on the roadways as a result of this project?
No, yeah, there's no adverse impact. And in fact, the counts that we conducted showed that the levels of service and delay calculated were consistent with our projections of three years ago.
And could we have number of site visits and dates of site visits and timings on those dates?
Sure. Sure. So we did seven days of traffic counts. Seven full days at the intersection of Eightieth Street with Modaf. Starting Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty three, through Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty three. And then similarly, we did six days of data at the facility, starting the same Wednesday through Monday.
That's a lot of site visits and examinations for, it's far more than the average traffic study. According to my experience, is that right?
Correct. For a typical traffic study, we would go out on one day, take a look at the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hour. And that would be our database for a traffic study. What we did here is we did the seven days and. We evaluated the highest volume for the morning and evening peak hour of the whole time period. So we didn't take any averages or anything. We evaluated the worst case scenario for those seven days.
So. That wasn't done as response to any neighbor complaints by any chance, was it? Or have, let me ask it this way, have there been neighbor complaints about traffic, to your knowledge?
By knowledge, no. I think the point of the exercise was to be extremely thorough in the data we collected.
Can I ask the same question of whichever operating witness operating?
Yeah, no, there has not been any complaints.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sorry.
Seems the same every day last time.
I think it was similar. I think it was.
I apologize, I said too quietly. I asked a question that I remember from three years ago, whether that was similar to the level of study that was done three years ago.
Yeah, it was. I know that the seven days at Modaf and eighty of his consistent. I believe in the original study, we did thirty days of data at the access drive. But at the time we were conducting the study, that would have led us through Christmas and New Year's. So we did the the first week as our data set.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the traffic engineer?
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This, that, I think that was the first opinion. You asked that we acknowledge that your various witnesses were experts. That's the first opinion testimony that I think we've had. The rest seem to be fact testimony. But just for the record, I I looked at the resumes and I think it's fair to say that they all qualify as experts.
Thank you. Some of Dr. Perlman's testimony might arguably be opinion, so I appreciate your your saying that. Again, Erin Bowden has presented before you previously. I would like her to walk through, just in part because. As with Winfield, there's, I don't usually get the opportunity to be able to say, three years ago, we said this would work. We believe it worked. And by the way, someone just did bought the property across the street. So it gives you a much better sense of it. I'd even give a more general, you talked about specifics, but more general on the other aspects.
Sure. Once again, my name is Erin Bowden. I'm a real estate appraiser at Con Resnick. At Con Resnick, we specialize in property value impact studies where there may be a concern from. Adjacent property owners or commission board members. We analyze and study the potential impact that that external influence may have. Whether that may be a behavioral health facility or a cell tower or a landfill. So what we do is attempt to identify if there is indeed an influence on property values and if there is quantify that.
I'm going to go for one second, just just so we're all clear, and there's no page numbers because it was put in. You have, again, it's been previously submitted to the county, it's been available to the public, but you have personal lines about the middle of the binder, starting with. Where it says Con Resnick.
Thank you.
The methodology that we use to determine whether or not there may be an external. Influence on property values is to compare a test property to a control property. We use the Real Estate Damages Textbook, which is published by the Appraisal Institute, written by Dr. Randy Bell. He states that if there's a legitimate detrimental condition, there will likely be measurable and consistent difference. Between the two sets of data. If not, there will likely be no significant difference between the two sets sets of data. Simply put, if there is an impact, you'll be able to measure it and you'll be able to measure it more than once. We've done numerous studies on behavioral health facilities in Illinois and other states as well. The results of our studies show that there is no negative impact to adjacent property values. In regards to a variety of market factors, including sale prices, sale prices per square foot. Overall marketability for days on market or rate of appreciation or new development. In regards to the property in Naperville, the the subject property question. We did take a look at all the homes along that street to see if any of them had sold after. The operation of the facility. And we were able to identify five properties that sold after. The operation of the facility in twenty twenty. They sold for a range of five hundred and thirty thousand to eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Ranging from about a hundred and eighty six dollars a square foot to three hundred and seventy dollars a square foot. These homes are a little bit unique in nature because they are on large acre lots. Not a lot of homes in the immediate community sit on such large acres. But we did directly interview all of the listing brokers to understand if they felt that they had sold at market. And we did do a comparison of sale price per square foot with the surrounding homes. And found that there was no impact to the sale price, nor did it have any longer days on market. Three of those homes actually also sold before the operation of the Montanito facility. And then again, at birth. So we can compare, did that existence of Montanito's operation. Coming online in twenty twenty affect the rate of appreciation and sale? And those three homes, we did not identify any slowing of appreciation. In fact, the most recent sale that occurred sold at an annual rate of appreciation of nearly fourteen percent. Whereas the. Annual rate of appreciation for the zip code, as per the F H F A Home Price Index, showed that it. The other homes in the zip code appreciated an annual rate of three point seven percent. So it appreciated at nearly three or four times as much as the rest of the zip code. A unique nature to the subject property itself. There is a home across the street, diagonal across the street from the facility that was purchased. And was purchased to completely raise and demolish and to construct a brand new custom home. That home is currently under construction. It was acquired in December twenty twenty one. For five hundred and thirty thousand dollars a square foot at two hundred and twenty five dollars a square foot, which was full market value. It wasn't even necessarily a tear down value, but I think given the large acre size of being two acres. It made for an advantageous repositioning of property. The the home is currently under construction of over four thousand square feet, including a separate garage. And custom features. So that demonstrates that the Montanito facility does not detract from. New development. That essentially wraps up the subject specific property analysis. When I was here last to discuss the Winfield property. I mentioned that there was a property immediately adjacent that, a facility that had sold after the operation. That facility, that property sold for one point three one million dollars. After almost a year that that facility had been in operation, it sold above market. It sold well above all the comparables of similar style homes in the area. And it sold for shorter days on market. We have provided a full report with extensive data from a full pair sales analysis. And we have also researched and analyzed other publications regarding behavioral health studies. And their potential impacts on property analysis. But I think the the evidence in regard to the subject property itself. Showing that the five homes along the street sold for above market, as well as the brand new home located. Across the street currently under construction, shows that the facility is not impacting. Property values in a negative way.
And if I could, when you were here previously, you reviewed similar uses that were not Montanito's uses.
Correct.
In the surrounding area.
Yes.
Unless they want you, of whom you don't need to, but you know, your prior testimony before this board was that there was no adverse impact on properties surrounding. Based on your new studies, is that still your findings?
Correct, that's still the case.
And it's based in the same methodology you discussed previously. Again, happy to go through it, but.
And the conclusion that you draw with respect to your sister property. As it relates to value, I I think it's important to understand that. The facilities aren't precisely the same, but the use is essentially the same, but for the age difference. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes.
And to reiterate, it's not necessarily Montanito operated facilities. We did a study on Center for Discovery Group home in Glenville and found no adverse impact. So we have not identified. Yes, Glenview. And I have not identified a negative impact at that other operated facility.
Okay, any question? Should we go to questions from the board for this witness? Are there any questions of this witness? Okay. What else you have for us?
I'm just going to wrap up and say that. First, as you know, but for in the room, you've established standards for.
If this is a concluding statement, can we get?
Absolutely.
Sir, are you a neighbor or somebody that wants to comment or ask questions?
Yes.
That could we?
Of course.
Do this and then you can incorporate your responses in your concluding statement.
Happy to do that.
Would you be sworn in if you would?
You just only swear in from the testimony about to give this cause now hearing, it'd be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So I'll be glad.
Here, okay. We have your name and address?
Sure, my name is Joe Wysocki. Last name is W Y S O C K I. My address is twenty seven W zero seven one Acadia Street. So I am directly east of this property and we share a property bond.
Just to tune it up a little volume.
I live right next door.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I I can't hear you again. I mean.
How about I stand up? Is that better?
Thank you.
So I live right next to.
West or east?
East.
East, okay.
So I share the property line directly to the east. So I am here because I'm opposed to this. I'm opposed to it for two main reasons. First of which is the violations of the conditions that you originally put on this property, specifically parking. You guys had put on some conditions, the amount of cars that could be put in the driveway. You put on places where they could be parked, specifically not in the front of the of the building where there's a little circle and grass, the driveway in front of that. Also, no parking on the road. Those are important to us as neighborhoods, important to me specifically, because this is a very narrow road. There are no sidewalks. It's a residential area, backs up to a forest preserve, pretty quiet. I've made sixteen complaints myself over the past three years. There's been over seventeen cars in the parking lot at different times. There's been cars that have been parked on that circle. There have been times where there are five cars that have been parked on the road. I haven't reported every single violation that I've seen, but I have made those complaints and something to pull a haust, they're documented. We can certainly pull those up if you like. That's sixteen violations in three different years. So they are blatantly disregarding a condition that you put on this property. Second thing that I would talk about is the safety. I stood here three years ago and I described a situation where an individual left the property unsupervised. Resulted in a big police presence while they were searching for them. Mr. Gershwin or Gresham, I'm sorry about the name, said that that individual was leaving. To find a coke, to get a coke, if I quote that correctly. They said that they made some changes to their policy. It was a teachable moment, I believe, was also a quote from a company representative. Unfortunately, that happens again. That happened last year. Where an individual left the property. Keep in mind, this is a quiet summer day. Kids are playing out in the yard. This individual was very loud, explicit, using profanity, saying, I don't want to be here. Walk off the property, down the road, through private property of the neighbors. Again, results in a police presence to our neighborhood that doesn't happen. Outside of this facility. And so I think when you put those together, you've got a disregard for the conditions. Safety of us in the neighborhood, some comments that were made here as well. I have never, I've lived there for ten years. I've never seen thirteen cars there prior to getting to the conditional approval. They definitely didn't have seventeen and they've never parked on the road. So whether that was going from eight to twelve that caused that, I don't know. But that that strikes me as as odd. I've also made complaints about traffic, specifically EMS traffic. And I don't know where these numbers come from. There's only six. I live right next door. I don't have to prove, I could certainly try to track that, but I've seen way more than six. So.
More than six what?
More than six cars or more than six emergency vehicles last year.
Okay.
I believe that's what he just quoted for twenty twenty three. I live next door. I see way more than, whether they're for the cook or the kitchen or whatever, it's more. Last thing I was going to jot down here too, he asked for no restrictions to put this in place. Because they don't want to pay the money and the time and the expense. And I simply sit here and say, the conditional approval, you guys put rules on them. And they specifically violated it willingly, knowingly. And they had this coming. So if you take that off, what's going to stop them from continuing to do it? So I'm against it. You should be too.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question to the gentleman?
Sure.
Is there a specific day that there's more cars or is it every day?
The multiple cars on the road tended to be on Fridays.
Which is the visiting day.
It appeared, I don't know the operations of this operation. If there's visiting days, that seems to correlate.
Great, thank you. One of the things I brought up the last time we had this hearing about, and you said you were going to consider having a. You have a bus or a van service to park offsite. And there's shopping centers all around there that have plenty of parking. There is a school. Kennedy, I think it's not Kennedy, it's Lincoln Junior High on Seventy Fifth Street. I'd like to know where that went, because I know I did ask that, to alleviate the parking situation. So I guess it's a bell on that bears.
Yeah, you, why don't you respond to all of this in your concluding?
I I definitely will. And first, please, out of respect, you absolutely did not follow follow enough errors. We have adequate parking on site for the use. The only complaint, and you know, we passed out to the neighbors previously. I'll be happy to give, Joe, Joe knows me because we've communicated before, I'm happy to give him my my card. We received one complaint about parking on site, there's parking on the grass. I received that complaint from from the county. They notified me on the same day I notified the site. And I believe either that day or the next day, they stopped doing it. So the answer is, we respect greatly what those issues are. We certainly have addressed the complaints that that we're aware of and we will address any others as well. But the project was designed with adequate parking for the people on visitors' day. And certainly if we ever ran into a point where there isn't adequate parking, then as you say, there are options for us to do it elsewhere.
But it seems to be that, and there are other neighbors, something on how it goes, sometimes you just don't go to the meeting. You're tired, you don't go to work. He came. Okay, and we, you know, we listen intently to all your stuff and I have no issue with the. With the site in what you're doing, but we went on your word, all of your words, to make sure it was, you know. Compatible with the neighborhood. And I don't like whether it's one neighbor or ten neighbors coming after you gave your word. And we gave. And I don't like, whether it's one neighbor or ten neighbors coming after you gave your word and we gave our votes to do this. So that kind of really upsets me right now, because this is in my area.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. And as I said, uh, to our knowledge, the one time that there was a violation there, we were told about it and we addressed it. Um, we can make sure, I am happy to give Mr. Wysocki both the phone number and onsite person that he can talk to. If he feels there are issues there and tells us, we can address them right away. Uh, and, and if there were visitors who came and parked on the street, um, I can have people talk about the fact that we do inform parents not to do that. We can take further actions to make sure that doesn't happen.
Any signage on site?
No, we don't. Uh, but we instruct our parents, um, when they do come for visiting of where to park on either side of the house, and we attempt to watch it as much as possible. But we're not always looking out that front door to see where they are parking. Uh, there was another situation where we were notified of there was parking on the street. Um, and I was called about that, and then we rectified it immediately as well, too.
Okay, well, maybe we can get an evaluation of complaints made to the county before we uh, uh, render an opinion or a court.
I have another question goes along with us. Mister Chairman, so if you don't have some, if you don't have the, the signage, and maybe you don't want the signage in a neighborhood, you instruct them, I get that, but um, was, and you're busy running the place, you're busy doing all this stuff. Maybe you need to hire a person to monitor that.
Let's try to have a petitioner work with the staff to try to resolve whether or not signage would be an advantage and what kind of discreet signing uh, might work. Um, and then, uh, I don't think we're gonna need a new public hearing for that, because it won't be a material change. But we'll consider that.
Well, in that sense, it's not incorporated. Who do they call? The Sheriff's Department?
Sure.
Which will take forever to get out there.
Yeah, I totally understand.
And, and to be clear as well, Mr. Mike, we have no objection to putting signage up there. I think there might have been some objection in the past by neighbors if we had done so, but we're happy to work with the staff. Confirm our right to put signage up there, and then to put up no signage to confirm.
Well, that's why I said discreet signage, you know, you don't want a ten-foot bore, ten-foot tall, red and white, no parking signs in, in a residential lot, the front yard. So.
Yeah, we'll absolutely work on that.
Let's have you try to work this out with the staff, if it can be worked out. And then we will evaluate any uh, resolution as well as evaluate whatever the record is uh, within the county about prior complaints. Because I got the impression from the original presentation that there really weren't any material uh, complaints on any issue.
The, the complaints we had were the ones we identified, which, which were then immediately addressed, which is why we assumed they were not. If there were additional complaints and if they were substantive, had the county agreed they were substantive, we want to address.
Okay.
I should also say, and I'll go back to the more formal, but one of the nice things that happened at our community meeting was that one of the gentlemen who was there said, you know, we have an email list that goes to all the neighbors, where we talk about the issues, and Sam gave them her card and said, put me on the list, so that you don't have to call the county. If that group is identifying, hey, you know what, X, Y, Z is happening, we want to know about it, and we'll address it. Yeah, as you, as you can see from the project, a significant amount of money was spent to make this, make this property, long before it was ever submitted for conditional use permit, to really upgrade and improve this property. These people also care about what their, their neighborhood is, and they're part of the neighborhood now, and so they want to address this.
I would recommend, in worst cost efficient, is to, for all the neighbors on that street, a WhatsApp.
Happy to do.
Group thing, so they can monitor this.
Let's not make any recommendations.
No, no, I'm not. I'm just giving them an idea, because I think it's.
That is not the, that is not a recommendation.
No, I'm not making it a recommendation. It's a suggestion.
But I would say, with it not being a condition of this as well, I will tell you for the record that we have already offered. We gave the card to the gentleman who said that he was part of that group. I don't honestly know if it's a WhatsApp or a different form, but some type of a group chat like that. I will make sure, if Joe wants a copy, that we give him the address as well, that, sorry, the email address as well. Happy to be a part of that and to address them.
Okay, let's move on past parking and then if you've responded sufficiently, we have some evaluating to do. So why don't you make your concluding remarks?
As, as I said before, um, in our application, uh, in the narrative of the, in front of our application, number three is our, our written responses to the standards. Obviously, we provided you, in addition to that response, surveys, exhibits, studies, and the testimony you've heard in response to questions today. We hope that we have addressed all those standards, but we're obviously very happy to walk through any of them. I want to generically say that while there are multiple standards, if you really look at them, um, the conditional use standards generally concern themselves with a couple of few items. One is not harming neighboring use of property, terms of property values, traffic, fire, light, and air, et cetera. Uh, as Dustin Brown has already indicated, there are no structural changes being proposed to the house at this time. Um, that is the current condition, is with that house as the way it is designed and as the way it's operated. Um, even in two thousand, two thousand twenty, the vast, vast majority of the landscape and other improvements that were made, as Dustin testified, were done prior to our request for the conditional use permit. And this zoning board requested, it became a condition, and we planted um, additional trees and other plantings around the site. Conresnick and Kaleaway presented for themselves, but I think made it very clear that based not only on their studies, based not only on um, their expertise, their expertise here, but also based on what's happening right across the street from us. There's clearly no adverse impact on surrounding property owners, um, and property values. And that's important. When we first came in, when we came in the last time, it's fair for people to be nervous about the unknown. The good news is today, we're no longer unknown. We know what's there, we know that it hasn't had an adverse impact on it. To this use part, it's also generally look at public health, safety, comfort, et cetera. In addition to working with your health department, which on April sixteenth, so a couple, two days ago, uh, confirmed in writing to this board that they had no objections to our petition. I believe you've got a copy of that. It was, it was written to the board. Um, we've satisfied all of your code requirements. Uh, we have probably as are more important, the impact on this community is that these are young women from this community and surrounding community who are being treated here. So in terms of impact, is it incredibly positive benefit and impact on those people? Uh, and I, I think the said far better by them than I ever could are some of the quotes that you'll see, um, if you look at the last page. I'm sorry, second last page of our, of our, of our presentation. These are just a few of those support letters you have in there. I'm just gonna read very quickly, uh, the highlights from three of them. Family, whether through friendships or blood relatives, is an important piece of therapy, and a home is where this is best built. This is from a mother of a Clementine Naperville client. Staff members at Clementine care for the girls as they would for their own family members and provide a nurturing, safe, and supportive environment. Another mother of another Naperville client. And the fi- the final one, and as the father of two daughters, I truly appreciate this. We truly believe our daughter's stay at Clementine saved her life. Um, we think there's not much better evidence than that of the positive impact this has on this community. Uh, we very much respect our obligation to meet your requirements. As, as we said, without it needing to be a condition, we will a hundred percent work with your county, and I will say, as you know, I represented other users here. Unlike many counties, you have a very active staff. I have no doubt that they will let us know and work with us to ensure that we're meeting your requirements, as we said. No objection if part of that is putting up discreet signage in front of the property. With that, I'm gonna close our presentation, recognizing again that our, our expert witnesses are here. Uh, and we'd be happy to respond to any other questions or concerns you might have.
Uh, well, you get the last word, so you've closed, and I think we're concluded. Um, I don't think we have. Well, we do have some additional information that is required, so we'll keep the record open. Uh, our next recommendation meeting is May second. Uh, but I'm not um, not really uh, anxious to resolve, since, I mean, you have an existing use. Uh, and this is a renewal, so there isn't any urgency. There are some details that need to be sorted out. So I'm gonna set this rather than May second, I'm gonna set it for the June sixth. Is it June sixth? June sixth recommendation meeting to be held, uh, that one's in this room. In this uh, room at five thirty.
Here.
Oh, it's in the cafeteria, June sixth?
Cause the other case.
The other case is June sixth? I thought that was, oh, that's right, that's June sixth. I thought that was May two. We did, okay. So it won't be held in this room, it'll be in the cafeteria.
Is that an evening meeting or?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Right.
And just to clarify, if I could ask the staff, I believe our current permit runs through July, is that correct? That we have, we have no objection to you.
Okay.
Are there any specific issues other than us working with the staff that you want us to have addressed before that meeting?
Well, the record's open, so you can, you can address anything you want.
Understood.
Uh, we made a couple of suggestions for your consideration. You can stand on your record or you know, make modifications, whichever. All right, um, I guess we'll look, there's no old business, new business to come before uh, the, the board at this meeting, and so therefore, uh, we will adjourn the meeting. Having just adjourned, adjourned the public hearing on the uh, zoning petition. So, just adjourn, adjourn, adjourn. We're done, thank you.
Thank you.